All right, I guess it's 6:30 and we'll call this meeting over to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call.
Mr. Ellingson?
Here.
Mr. Herberly?
Mrs. Maxey?
Here.
Mr. Mo?
Here.
Mr. Mulholland?
Here.
Mr. Renninger?
Mr. Ward?
Present. Okay. Motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to the public hearing on a waiver of ISBE rule.
I'll start with this one. Gosh, was that June we did that meeting? Got an email back from Winnie Tuttle. We had a slight technicality mistake, so she's asking us that we redo the hearing for contracting of driver's right, driver, DriveRight and contracting that service out. In our hearing bulletin that I put in the paper, and this is my fault, I put both contracting and the raise of fee. She said it had to be two separate adds. So I did send it to her and say, "I hope that this hearing notice that I have is okay. Please email me back if it's not." She didn't email me back. I assumed it was okay. So it's my error. So we just have to redo it, and if there's somebody that would like to speak to it for us to contract out, they have the opportunity to do so.
We have nothing to say.
Go ahead.
My daughter's driving, that's all.
Thank you. We'll move on to audience to visitors. Then we'll move on to the Treasurers report.
Does anyone have any questions?
Is there none? We'll move on to the Superintendent's report.
Sure. Last week on Wednesday, our schools got off to a very smooth start, and I want to thank my administrators and staff and everyone for their hard work for making that happen. Those first couple of days, as you know, can be very stressful, getting everybody organized and in the right routines, but for the most part, I think it went very, very well. The other thing, last week on Tuesday, our second institute day, we had Jody Ware come in and speak to our certified staff as we look to do professional development for implementing the student growth part of the evaluation. And she did a nice job with that. We had some good discussions, and we're off to a good start of implementing the student growth piece of our certified evaluation. So I want to take a moment, too, to thank Belvedere Chamber of Commerce and also the Blaine United Methodist Church. Both of them gave donations for our schools, school supplies and calculators and notebooks and pencils and all sorts of things. So thank you to both of those two groups for their generosity. We're very appreciative of that. And at last board meeting, I asked if the board was interested in doing something more with some sort of professional development workshop. I did get a chance to speak with Laura Martinez about where to go from there. Her recommendation was is that there's an online survey, or yeah, an online survey that our board members could take. There's a sample in your folder of what the survey would kind of be about, and then there's a report that comes back with it based on your answers. And what she does is kind of tailor makes a professional development workshop for the board based on what arises from that survey. So if that is something the board would like me to go ahead and talk with Laura about, I'd be more than happy to begin that process if that's where you guys are interested to go. Just would need a little feedback from you guys on direction.
I can get online and take a survey.
Yeah.
Good. All right, so I will.
I have less time on my hands than you.
I'll pursue that then.
Good deal.
Thank you, guys. And that's it for my report tonight.
All right. You know. Committee reports. Policy committee, Mr. Ward.
I had some policies late last week. Most of them are general housekeeping. We may have to have a short meeting sometime in the next one.
Business Services Committee, Mr. Mulholland.
Business Service Committee met on Thursday, the 18th. It was a productive meeting. Andy Baird was in and talked about bond refunding. He'll be here to make a presentation tonight, we think.
I thought so. I know we asked him.
Yeah. I think he said he's coming. Didn't he say something about showing up in a golf shirt?
Yes.
I know he had it on his calendar, so I hope he's going to be here.
I'll let Andy address that. That was a great presentation, I thought. There was, there was a lot there to think about in that presentation, but certainly Andy had put in some good work. Julia reported on the, on the audit review, talked a little bit about some of the software issues with the new system, and I think there was some discussion about whether or not we were in the right place with the business system that we currently had, whether we needed to make some adjustments to that going forward to give Julia something more effective to work with. I think Mike then noted that in addition to our regular audit, which is ongoing right now, that the IRS and the state both wanted to talk to us again. So I think Mike made the comment that I think everybody that had, had or could, has audited us in the last year.
I don't think anybody's missing.
Early tax money, there was some discussion because the county gives us our, our tax receipts early about whether or not we keep clean books. And there was some discussion about reaching out to the county and seeing whether they would hold on to that until after July 1st so that we could stay on a cash basis rather than try and figuring out, you know, at the end of one year, we've got a bunch of money sitting in an account and where it looks like that we've got a surplus left when in fact those are operating monies for the following year. So Julia was going to reach out and talk to the county about that.
I did. Do you want to hear the answer?
Sure.
No, 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 we've got an agenda item, so we'll get to the agenda.
Okay. So there was a proposal made for bus purchases that the committee supported. A tentative budget was offered. There was some discussion about that, but Julia will be making adjustments and bringing that back to us. Mike talked a little bit about certified staff overloads, said that didn't really have any issues at the time, and that we had some update with food services as well, and so many improvements are trying to make to that program.
Okay.
Next meeting date to be determined sometime in September.
All right. We'll move on to Facilities Long Range Planning Committee, Mr. Moon.
We met last Thursday also. We discussed all the construction projects that we had this summer, painting and building cleaning. Basically, Jim Novak talked about what got accomplished this summer and where he was with the buildings being ready for school starting. Our next meeting is to be determined.
Okay. And Curriculum Committee, Mr. Herberly.
The Curriculum Committee met on Wednesday, the 17th, and the presentation began with Heather. Hold on a second, I'm pulling my thoughts together because we've been switched around on the agenda.
Heather was changing the dates with the trimester grade.
Yes, and we discussed changing dates on report cards for K through 4. And the report cards turning, going from at the second, third, and fourth quarter to project reports at the second, third, and fourth.
More of a balanced trimester, yeah. So it was just communication a little earlier upfront.
It seemed like everybody was okay with that idea. Then Ms. Littleje presented the curriculum summary, and if you guys remember, we, when I first began or initiated the Curriculum Committee with me, it became pretty clear that we've got a lot of work to do with aligning our curriculum. And we're a year into it, and now we have a new person really spearheading that. And we have still have a lot of work to do, quote was, particularly that all admin were concerned with science. We still got a lot to do with aligning our curriculum, but at least now we have somebody in that position. And when she finished presenting, I told her I was looking forward to seeing something physical, like feeling like we're actually making progress on that way. As you can imagine, getting all grades and all curriculum aligned, especially with next generation science standards, it's, it's a pretty big task, but it sounds like we still got a lot of work to do, but at least we have somebody working on that. Jake then presented on a few details about equivalencies, and there's been a lot of back and forth discussion about how much credit should be given, should we wait classes that are given at other schools, should we take a look at our policy now if other schools don't wait the courses, should we wait the courses? Because we had one issue in particular where it seemed to the committee that even if the other school didn't give the weighted grade, we should consider that. And it seems like there's a lot of discussion to be had. Would you agree, Mike?
Yeah.
And a lot of details to be worked out with what we wait, because there are so many permutations of what kind of course, where are they taking it, what value is it? And in particular with the dual credit program, Rock Valley's dual credit program, there's a kind of an ongoing discussion about should we have, should Rock Valley courses equate to one year of high school, or should it just be one semester of high school? And it seems as though we only have two people that I know of in dual credit, so I offered to kind of work with the counselors at the high school to look at the courses that are being offered at Rock Valley and equate them to North Boone. And if at a semester of Rock Valley, they cover the same as a year at North Boone, maybe we should consider them giving them one credit for that class at Rock Valley. As .5 seems, at least to me, I know I was kind of the one, being a Rock Valley teacher and a parent of somebody in the dual credit program, it seemed like we should rethink whether or not a semester course is worth half of a high school course. So that's a continued discussion.
Yeah, I think we could have gone for days with all the different variables to consider.
We do not have another committee meeting planned.
Okay.
Thank you. Can I say one more thing, Matt?
Yep.
Since we do have some parents out there, we are booking for, was it three, Mike?
Three.
Three parents to be on the committee. I put a post down on Facebook today, and I think we already have about five people who said that they were interested. So it looks like we're going to have a pretty substantial list of names of people who are interested. I'm not really sure to, how to tell them how those names will be chosen, if they'll be thrown in the hat, or if we look at when people are available, but if you folks know of anybody else who might be interested in serving on the Curriculum Committee, we're looking for parents. That's it.
All right. Thank you.
Probably for updating names, too, for some of our other committees. I don't know, Don, if we want to look at the names that you have on your policy committee to make sure that they're still relevant, and Ed and Tom for both business and facilities, we may want to just update that to make sure that who we have there is who we are consistently having.
When those names are coming in, what do you want me to do with those names? Do I form them to you or do I enter?
Why don't, do you want me to hold them, Joe, and then I'll share them with you when I get them?
Okay.
Because really, probably, the way the policy reads is Matt that assigns them.
That's right.
But if we work with the chairperson and make recommendations.
I'm not sure we want to say Matt gets to decide or reply to them, but we'll follow protocol to select your parents.
We'll work through policy.
Because then Matt will be getting calls. That wasn't my choice.
That's where we want that, isn't it?
You can take the Blaine shirt.
All right. I guess we'll move on to some agenda. Motion on that. Move to approve.
Move to approve as presented.
Okay.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Rule call.
Mr. Ellingson?
Yes.
Mr. Herberly?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxey?
Yes.
Mr. Mo?
Yes.
Mr. Mulholland?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes. Motion carries. We'll move on to unfinished business. Approval of Metis' ADS upgrade?
Yes, we brought that back to the Facilities Committee. Discussed it at length. We had Randy there, we had Jim there, and really, like I said, this is the software platform that's going to run our buildings that have Johnson Control on it. If we want to run Johnson Controls and be able to monitor it from computers and be able to safely affect what we're doing in those buildings, it's just something we have to upgrade and do. Tom and Ed, is there anything you'd like to add to that? I know that you guys asked about breaking it down per building. They called twice to Johnson Controls, never got a response back. And Randy's response to me was, he says, he doesn't know if they'd be able to break it down by building, because he said really it's a software platform. So he said it's probably something where if they did it, all they'd do is turn around and divide it back by building, which would be about $4,800 per building. Does it have the potential to grow if we add it to? Yes, it would have the potential to grow. So. Any questions on that?
Is this system proprietary to Johnson Controls?
That one I couldn't answer.
Or is it just a third party that they commonly work with?
Couldn't answer that one, Tom. I don't know. It does sound like it's the only system that is going to be able to, to meet that or can do that.
That, that part I understand, but the part I don't understand, if it's, if it's not proprietary to Johnson Controls, why we didn't have two bids on this?
Not sure.
Any further discussion or questions? Is there a motion?
Move to approve as presented.
Mr. Mulholland? Is there a second?
Second.
Maxey? Rule call.
Mr. Herberly?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxey?
Yes.
Mr. Mo?
No.
Mr. Mulholland?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Ellingson?
Yes. Motion carries. We'll go on to the approval of driver education waiver of school code.
Yeah, back to that again. This, as I said earlier, this is more of a formality to make sure we go through the process the right way. This would be, again, for us to contract out with DriveRight. We went through and already did the bids and everything with that, and this is to just make sure that our formal process is done the right way so that we can have the waiver submitted to ISBE and approved through ISBE. What do you need from us? A vote on it. To waive, basically to waive the school code so that we can contract drivers, drivers outside with an outside contractor. I do rule calls.
Do you need a motion?
Yeah, I need a motion, too.
Okay. I'll make a motion. Move to approve the application for waiver of school code.
Second.
Motion second. Rule call.
Mrs. Maxey?
Yes.
Mr. Mo?
Yes.
Mr. Mulholland?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Ellingson?
Yes.
Mr. Herberly?
Yes. Motion carries. Then we're on to bond refunding.
As my eighth grade daughter would say, "Well, this is awkward." Andy, who was supposed to be here from Baird tonight, and I know we booked with him last Thursday, and I know you even had email conversations back and forth today, so I don't.
Today. I had him today.
Today. So I don't know what happened. I don't know if he's running later, if something happened. Give me a little direction. This would probably be one where I say, "Let's reschedule at least for September's meeting."
I need to move the agenda item down to...
See if it gets here.
...item 14.
Buy him a little more time, we'll see. Sounds good.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, then we'll move on to new business. August 2016 bills.
It was, it was my month for bills. I went through them just like I do any other one. I didn't see anything out of line, but with that being said, while I was looking through them, I would like to see the administrators and Dr. Greenley get together and discuss how much money we're going to pay a vendor without a second quote from another vendor. Because the $1,000 bills and the $1,500 bills and the $600 bills, they all add up to a pretty big bill every month. And if no one's getting a second quote on the $600 bill, that's not how the business world works today. Sorry to say. I mean, people are quoting $29 items to two or three vendors. I'm not saying we need to go that far into it, but I'm saying we need some kind of cutoff where the administrator that, that signed off on the PO has some paperwork to back up that they had a second price, and it was higher than the price they chose. He made it.
Tom, if there's some items that you're thinking of specifically, maybe we could talk, you know?
Yeah, you just look through the bills, and I mean, I don't know how Batteries Plus got all our, all our battery sales. I, I don't know how Geotherm or Geostar got all of our heat work. Just look through them, and every third or fourth one, you can say, "Well, I wonder if somebody checked the price anywhere else," or "If they checked the price anywhere else." Don't sound like much money, but if it's, if it's $100 bucks a week or $500 bucks a week at each school, at the end of the year, it's a lot of money, and that's just not how business works today.
I just know going through our practice of that, every single time we're doing some of these business things, I really feel we are pretty conscious about making sure that we're, we're working with vendors that we know are efficient, cost efficient, and also doing good jobs. I know we try to do that every single time, and I think that that's the mentality of most of the staffs. But I hear you. I understand.
Yeah, let's, let's just throw it out there. When's the last time we, we bid our disposal service up against our current supplier? When's the last time we bid our rodent control up against our current supplier? When's the last time we bid our heating and cooling guy up against another supplier? I mean, I could go on all night, and I hear what you're saying, too, Mike, but we're not that efficient if we don't have any practice in place for something like that.
I can look into that and give back to you on it, because I know we, we are, we're conscious with it. I don't know the current practice, how we use. I know in my previous district, with some of those services, we made sure we went out to bid with was every three years to make sure that we were constantly looking for the best quote, plus working with vendors that we knew were doing solid businesses, too. But I can get back to you on that of what, what our practice and policy is on there.
Okay. So then I would make a motion to approve the August 2016 bills.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion?
I'm interested to know if that sounds amenable to Tom. I know we have a maximum that can't be spent without board approval, but is that a one bill maximum, or is it in a certain timeframe? Because I suppose you could take one large bill and spread it out in over a year's payments and then...
Pretty common practice.
...not have to be board approved.
Pretty common practice.
Does the current maximum have a timeframe, or is it just no bill? Is it $10,000? It just has to be board approved. Any expenditure over $10,000? But Tom's point, I think, is pretty valid. Maybe that needs to be, any, any bill that is going to be even $10,000 over six months still needs to be approved, or has that become too onerous, like too, too micromanaging?
Well, I, I agree with you. From you guys on your side, you need to be accountable of what's going on. From my end, I like to think that that's something we're doing every day. I don't want to make it something where it slows us down from getting things done in a timely manner, but maybe at the next board meeting, I could kind of bring you back some of the practices and things that we have in place for discussion so that, so that I clear up the communication with how we go about that practice and what we do and how we get things done.
Does a three-year cycle seem reasonable? Whatever items you're talking about, we have bid out every three years and...
Well, we have a motion and a second on the floor right now, so we should probably make this new business or a policy if we want to, but...
I think we just tail it till Mike brings back his presentation and go from there.
I'll bring something back in September. All right, so rule call.
Do you read the motion again, please?
To approve the 2016 bills as presented. Mr. Mo?
Yes.
Mr. Mulholland?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Ellingson?
Yes.
Mr. Herberly?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxey?
Yes.
We'll move on to approval of the FY 2017 tentative budget.
We presented that the other night in our business meeting on Thursday. Julia presided, presented the tentative budget with you. She also gave you a summary sheet where some of the numbers had descriptions or descriptors to it that might help you understand them. Julie, anything you'd like to add at this time?
The only change that we talked about was moving an additional study to the O&amp;M Fund, and that will be changes coming in September with any other changes that happen in the coming year.
And we were talking a little bit before the meeting. When we get to September, we'll highlight those, because usually every time from August to September, there are some slight adjustments. So any adjustments that we made previously from now until September, we'll bring back and highlight again for you in September. Okay.
The committee felt that Julie did some really good work putting the budget together and giving us her rationales for any adjustments that she made to any of the line items and showed us why the differences are out there. So it would be my intent to approve the tentative budget as, as presented. Motion? Second.
Any discussion? Rule call.
Mr. Mulholland?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Ellingson?
Yes.
Mr. Herberly?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxey?
Yes.
Mr. Mo?
Yes.
Okay, move on to IMC, class sizes.
Yeah, I've had conversations with each of the board members regarding the class size issue, especially the one we're having in fifth grade at the UE. Provided for you and your packet, the number of each of the students in each section and a breakdown of some of the options that Mr. Pierce and I discussed. And as we looked at it, we felt, and with those options, what we felt was best for students moving forward. I would like to recommend that we hire one teacher. That teacher would be used to teach social studies for fifth grade. That is something that many board members have expressed of bringing back with social studies. And in the spring of this year, the State of Illinois expressed that they would like, or excuse me, the State of Illinois adopted new social study standards and is asking for the 2017, 2018 that schools implement those standards into their curriculum. This is an increase in an FTE, which is not represented in the budget. Am I correct on that, Julia?
Right.
Yeah. However, it is the same amount of FTEs as what we had last year, so it's not growing FTEs above and beyond where we were at the end of conclusion of last school year. In looking to the future, this fifth grade class, as it moves forward one, we probably would look to do something with class sizes again in sixth grade that's provided that the numbers hold where they are. And the fourth graders that would be moving up, provided that the numbers hold where they are, we would probably be needing to grow a section in fifth grade again next year, because we have 136 in fifth grade right now, which has put us over. The fourth grade as of today was 132. So both, both those class sizes are pretty similar, which would keep us over where our class size policy is. So for the next two years, we probably are looking at doing something with sections at fifth and sixth grade. So our recommendation is, is to bring one teacher into fifth grade this year, probably looking to do something with sixth grade next year. Take any questions or discussion?
We left FTDE open. Where was, we had a teacher we didn't hire back in Manchester?
Yes, what, what happened was is we, Jean Perkins resigned. We knew we needed to fill that. We felt we had an extra position going to be at Manchester. Sandy Moon asked to transfer, transferred over to the other, so technically the open spot would have been at Manchester. So that's the one I did not fill. Be based on, I was wondering if your class sizes to see where they were. Hope that makes sense.
Any further discussion?
Under the present configuration sentence of class size, what would we have an additional teacher?
What would those class sizes be? We're guessing roughly right around 24 to 26. Am I correct on that, Jamie?
What are your sizes?
I believe in the way Jamie worked it up, I just saw it up there on the previous page, 24 to 29. And I'm assuming when you get to 29, that is the inclusion of some of our special ed[1756.88] We're guessing roughly right around 24 to 26. Am I correct on that, Jamie?
What are your sizes?
I believe in the way Jamie worked it up, I just saw it up there on the previous page, 24 to 29. And I'm assuming when you get to 29, that is the inclusion of some of our special ed students that come in to...
At the middle school, we had the, we added a special ed teacher, so we were able to break those kids in half. But currently, with the way that it's proposed, we wouldn't have that extra special ed sections mostly. Those students would still be closer to campus. So that is why that one class, we call fifth grade, well, sixth grade is below that, but that's why those two classes are slightly higher.
So if you go down one more slide, so you can't provide us a schedule like this?
As far as what the class sizes, okay?
If you added that extra teacher. I didn't ask Jamie to do that, but...
Yeah, I mean, I absolutely can. I mean, the entire schedule would have to be rehashed by adding in a fifth class period for social studies. So I mean, I could definitely do those numbers and what that's going to look like.
Could you talk a little bit about how you're in your mind thinking of doing that schedule, how to make that work? Because now all of a sudden it goes from four to five sections.
Well, right now, we have our social studies study skills time already built in and currently that's at 40 minutes. So this is where our students have the current social studies setup as well as a study skills RTI time for our special ed students. What we would need to do, so that fifth period is already, we would take one or two minutes off of the current core classes that are at 50 and bring it to 48, which would put eight more minutes, additional minutes on that 40. So now all classes can be 48. So it's from all five classes that had that 48. We also implemented a study hall at the end of Core Four. So this will be the opportunity for those students that need the RTI to still get the RTI. It also gives our gen ed students a study hall where they have additional time to work. And then every student, just like at the middle school, will be able to have social studies taught by someone who teaches social studies. As far as how that schedule would look like, I mean, obviously the position would have to be posted. I will do everything by hand as far as what that schedule's going to look like as well as placement of kids. Because as soon as we hire someone, we want to start right away, but I cannot make those changes in power school until that happens. So I would have everything done at my hand. At that point, you'd have our counselor hired. You guys approved her tonight. And then we would just be able to input. So as soon as someone is hired, I would need a day, maximum two days, because everything would be done by hand just to implement it, so it should be a simple transition. Language arts affects it a little bit. Currently, if you guys notice, language arts teachers only have two blocks of language arts, but those are double blocks. So the language arts teachers would have to pick up a fifth class, which means there would be a share between Matt Pross and Heidi Seren in the third grade between language arts and reading to break that up. So that's a minor tweak in the schedule, but that's, you know, we've implemented that in most of these programs. So it can be done. I mean, the timings were off, I'll be honest. I mean, just, we've already started the fifth grade, we're already anxious, they got that transition in, they're doing a fine job. But I mean, the change at all, there's going to be some anxiety. But we do have a classroom kicked out of the UE. We're ready to go. But it'll just be an interesting transition, but we'll...
No, that's not the visual you asked for, Don. I didn't ask Jamie for that, so I asked him to show me how it was set now and then to make sure that he had plans for how he would implement it should it be approved.
Was that something you guys talked about at the curriculum committee level? Are you confident, Jamie, you can get the right person?
I am. Currently, this, we're set up and I haven't had this conversation with Mike, but just to answer your question, one of our current, I mean, we still have to postpone, one of our current fifth grade teachers is excited and eager and social studies is what he wants to teach us, one of our language arts teachers. If we were to go that route, like I said, with the whole chain, the correct process that we need to do, I'm confident that we'd easily be able to find a quality language arts teacher, more so than a social studies, to be honest. And the reason is, we just have language arts teachers, there's more. When we posted the position in sixth grade, we had a lot more applicants than we did when we had the fifth grade or the seventh, eighth grade portion of social studies. So I have that to stay in mind. And as well as, three days before school started, the Jordan Club went to the high school, we were left with an open sixth grade position and we found a quality candidate that was ripped at his previous job and he's doing a fine job since the first week of school. So, you know, the pool isn't very deep this time of year, but there are those teachers out there that were ripped for no reason of their own, still looking for jobs. So I'm confident. I have told Mike, I don't want to just settle. I mean, I don't want to just put a warm body in the arena. This isn't something long-term that I would like, we know quality persons.
And the other thing we talked about was being that the state has adopted these standards, this is the perfect time for our fifth grade, seventh and eighth grade to at least start working with those standards, just starting right there. So our hope is that we do have good quality teacher there.
So Jamie, the social studies would be covered, you feel, by somebody we already have?
If, I mean, if we go through that process and that's just how it ends up, we do have Matt Pross, I don't know if you're aware of him, he's a second year teacher teaching language arts, does a fine job of language arts, but social studies is his thing. That's what he wants to do, that's what he wants to teach. So if we, you know, like I said, we still have to postpone, move through that process, but he would be a good fit into that position if that's the route we're taking.
And if I'm understanding correctly from discussions with a few other teachers, that a language arts degree is a pretty common degree, so there's going to be a substantial pool.
Correct. Most universities now require whatever you're getting, you get language arts on top of it. For reasons, I mean, you're marketable, just add those skills because language arts should be incorporated also.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Ward? Mr. Ellingson?
Yes.
Mr. Haverly?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Obstand.
Mr. Mahalan?
Yes.
Kerry, let's move on to early tax money.
Yes, this was brought up at the last business committee meeting and kind of more of an informational. We were asked to bring this back to the board after contacting county clerk's office to find out more about it. Julia, you spoke with someone down there and I'm... What was it?
Curtis Newport.
Curtis Newport. And if you would please share with the board maybe what Curtis Newport said and kind of more of an informational side?
Right, I called him and told him that what we were thinking about doing and he shared with me that he was to calling, Hanegans and Kenny things, we're in a small part of Boone County and he wasn't happy about it. He liked doing that, he said that's not the good principles of accounting, holding money, get money yesterday deposited. And I, you know, I told him I understood that, but the only fact was that we were up against other schools that did accrual accounting and when they do accrual accounting, they back that out and they send it to the state backed out. So there's schools that are sending up and there's schools that are including all their data with this early tax money and then there's schools who account, accrual accounting are backing them out.
How does that affect us? How does that affect us? Does that affect us in our financial profile rating?
I think so, yes. You're going to definitely get a higher financial profile from that, which is a good thing to get that, it helps your bond rating and you've got to understand there's some good things and there's some bad things. If you have more money sitting in the bank, you're going to have a better bond rating, right?
Right.
And you're going to, if you have more money, you're going to get a lot more interest.
Right.
And then the other thing is, we are being compared to other schools that do accrual. But, I mean, that was his choice and I also called and talked to Michelle, he ought to be here today about it as well, and I thought, well, I want to hear her opinion on it. And she also did not like that. So there was two people that gave me an opinion of they didn't like it, but they would, they would understand if we did it. And he would, he would do that. The only thing he said is we would lose our direct deposit. He would have to produce a check, it would be mailed or we'd have to come and figure it off and that's pretty sad.
So I think what I hear you saying is it's not worth the hassle.
Probably. I mean, I don't know how much, I think it's probably going to be better for us in the bond rating side of it, but I don't know how they're, how it works with the state on, you know, having a hundred and five balance. How they compare us.
So we need to do anything with that? I think if the board is just willing to let it stay the way it is, I...
It was just here as a discussion anyway, yeah.
Is there any further discussion on that? We will move on.
I have nothing for executive session unless the board does, but all of my stuff that I needed for executive session hit the consent agenda. I'm not sure how that happened, but I'm glad. So unless the board has something that they need to speak to executive session, we can bypass that tonight if they'd like. And then we've got to go back to...
All right, then we will go back to the bond refunding.
That doesn't look like you were out golfing unless that's what you golfed in today, so...
No, and I apologize if I was late.
So I've got Andy, Art from Baird here. We, he ran some scenarios by us the other night that said really if we decided to restructure our bonds, there'd be some savings for the district. Business committee looked at it, they made some other suggestions. So Andy took some of those suggestions that we shared with him and he's got some material here to present to the board tonight, so...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And that was the cleanest laying out of a file I've ever had.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, yes, sure.
Actually...
Okay, sorry. Sure.
Okay, so actually, I'm going to start with this first single page right on top that you guys just received. Kelly, I don't know if you have this. Yeah, that would be it. So at the last meeting, the last full board meeting that I had attended, we rushed at the very, we were talking about new money options, rushed on that there was an opportunity to refund some bonds for savings. The reason I didn't bring it up at that time is because any of the new money talk would have eroded, it wouldn't have eroded the savings. It pretty much would have varied the savings and it just would have made the new money more efficient. So eliminating the new money just for now and focusing on the refunding for savings, you have the alternate revenue source bonds outstanding and right now we can call in a majority of those bonds for savings, for true savings, which means that you would issue a new alternate revenue source bond to pay off the bonds that are outstanding and the resulting payments on the new issuance would be lower than what you currently pay. What that results in is about a $15,000 to $20,000 per year lower payment and overall it adds up to these savings figures that you see in the top portion of this handout, which is approximately $150,000 of debt service savings, just comparing debt service to debt service. And I'm obligated to share with you the present value of that savings, which basically puts that future savings in today's dollars. And that's about $130,000. I know IGF O A standards suggest that you target three to five percent present value savings whenever pursuing your refunding for savings. And right now, we're at about 16%, so we're far in excess of that. And, you know, that's a product of being closer to the call date, which is coming up in January of 2018, as well as interest rates where they are now. So this is something that, all the things that we've talked about, the new money, no new money, this, and there is one other refunding scenario that I wanted to run by you tonight. But all of these can be done with or without each other. You can choose to issue new money or choose not to issue new money for projects. You can choose to refund these bonds on a standalone basis. And then the other option, which I'd call a restructuring, is something that we talked about at the business committee meeting that we're going to, I believe. We talked about that last week. So I'll just pause right now on the refunding for savings and open it up if anybody has any questions or thoughts on that.
First paragraph says this was assuming marketing conditions in 2015. This is over a year old now?
The 15 is a mistake. This was June 17th of this year and interest rates haven't changed hardly at all from that time. So we reran the numbers and we were with him, I think $2,000 of the present value number. So I chose, instead of having several different copies, I chose to just leave it as this.
It's not as hard to put it over a year old?
Yep, nope.
And the standalone, what is our, what is our expenses to say bear Chaplin Color sale?
Well, these savings figures are assuming that those fees have been paid. They're not going to be netted by the fees. But right now, I called Chaplin Color, they told me that their fee for this, this specific issuance would be 9,800, 9,800. Our fee would be 20,000. And there would be, depending on when this is issued, there may or may not be the need for an additional $4,000 of these, which would be an escrow agent, somebody that would manage the escrow, that would be held temporarily until the call date. Typically, that's a bank. And a verifier, which is a CPA that would verify those numbers.
Does that 4,000 figure in the year, 130 then?
Yes, all of these fees have been assumed for the purposes of generating that savings number. Does anybody else have any questions?
We can't talk you down off the 20,000 line?
You can. Typically, our minimum is 25,000, but that'd come down a little bit.
Just felt like it needed to be said.
Sure.
And you were late.
That's true. There was a road closing in Camden Hills that I didn't know about, but...
Did you actually put the other schedule in what the payments would be?
I don't think I have that side by side for you. But I can certainly provide that to you or to the administrators first thing in the morning so that you can see that.
I think this document...
What is that?
This document, you can see it from there?
Yeah.
This calendar is present.
Right, so what you would see in place of that is instead of the 117,000 or so, it'd be about 99,000 to about 101,000 annually. That's what the new payment would be. So I can provide that to them. If you decide to move forward with this, it's about a one-month timeframe where we would need a school board meeting in the middle. That's basically the window we would need to figure out the timing when everything would need to happen. So we will decide that at some point and, you know, if you want to move forward, let me know, we can get the ball rolling on that.
You said that there was a kind of a time period where you need to make a decision by, right?
On that refunding?
Yeah.
That one...
Was that a December timeline or is that something different?
No.
It was in reference to, it was to have effect on next spring.
Got you.
Right. Yeah. But those, the alternate bonds are not paid from a tax levy. So this refunding is not really timed down for that.
Got you.
Okay, one, isn't there payment January 1?
Yes, sure.
About July 1?
It's about 90, 85, 90,000 for the... January 1, I usually pay it in December.
Isn't it two payments?
There's a principal and an interest in December, January 1, and then there's one July 1.
All right, well, we'll move on to the two-page handout that you have. Kelly, do you have access to your email right now? If I sent you an updated version with the correct abatement amounts? What is your email address?
K...
Kate Holster?
Yeah.
Is it MBCUSD.org? Hopefully she'll get this quickly. I think it's a word dot, you know, hopefully that's not a problem. But you all have it in front of you, so I'll go ahead and start talking about it. So the first page you see before, it's just an outline of the debt as it's outstanding right now, each series individually. And near the middle of the page is a column that says total debt service and outstanding bonds. I think you're all well aware that those levies are ascending every year until the final year where there's a significant drop off. And then also you plan to make certain abatements with the CDB money that you receive in both pieces, which I believe that this handout that you have in front of you that will go up on the board here has the corrected amounts, which I did have last meeting, so Julia provided those to me today. But after netting those abatements from the levy, we get the actual net levy that's extended to the tax base, even given the amount of money that's being put toward paying down those... Even given the amount of money that's being put toward paying down those bonds with the CDB money, we still have an escalating structure in place, ascending levies that go up every year. And basically, with the client's EAV and that ascending levy, every year, you've been asking the same pool of taxpayers to divvy up the cost of that, that bill to pay those bonds, and it's going up every year. So every year, you're asking them for a few more dollars than you did the year before, and you will continue to do so until that debt is paid off. So the second column from the right is the net levies, as, as they're currently scheduled to be paid, given the abatements that you have in place. Can we go to the second page?
No.
I might be easier to look at the current numbers. Again, going back a couple months, Mr. Paul Holland had asked, as we're looking at new money options, some restructuring options, refunding options, would it be possible to restructure the existing debt without doing any of the other stuff? And the answer is yes. The second page of this landscape handout here, that, that's the next one, Kelly.
All right.
You, you don't have to pull it up, don't, don't worry about it.
This one?
Uh, yeah, that's it, that's the page we're looking at. So what I wanted to take a look at, based on, you know, that idea, you know, whether or not you could do that, is what does a reasonable restructuring of your debt look like? I could have taken your debt and refunded it out another full twenty years, really lowered those payments, obviously it would have added significant cost in the long run, but I, those payments theoretically could have been as low as maybe one point eight million per year. Obviously, the cost in the long run would have been much higher. So what I did is looked at, where is a good spot to level off this repayment, where it is gonna have somewhat significant impacts to the tax base over the next few years as those levies are paying down? I decided to level it off, having one more jump after the, the coming tax year, and leveled it off at two point six million dollars. That ended up taking out the levies an additional two years beyond where they're scheduled to be paid off. Again, you could have went out a full twenty, we went out just an additional two. Again, what this is gonna do is it's going to allow the tax base to see, at least for this portion of their tax bill, some more, a little bit more consistency than what they've seen in the past. In the long run, over the next twelve years, this structure would cost the tax base an additional eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars of added cost. What, Mr. Ward had asked me, as we left the last meeting, was what would those impacts look like to, not necessarily an average homeowner, but just based on a hundred thousand dollars of market value? So I'm gonna go over those impacts in a minute, but I'll pause here if anybody has any questions about this. And basically, what we're doing here is grabbing portions of the voter-approved debt that you have outstanding, which is the entirety of everything you have outstanding, aside from the alternate bonds. Grabbing pieces of that and pushing it out to the backend. So it, it could be equated to paying down a few years of a mortgage, refunding that mortgage, but still extending it to the whole thirty years. In this case, we're not doing, you know, another thirty-year mortgage, we're just adding two more years on the backend. Does anybody have any questions about this?
I have a question.
Yes?
If you did both of them at the same time, would the price remain the same, or is it a price for each of them?
The fees?
Yeah.
There are different fees for each individual scenario, and if multiple options are done, the aggregate fee would be less. Now, our fee for the alternate bond refunding, I'm assuming that would go through a private placement, not a traditional underwriting, so that's just a flat fee. If a larger bond issue was issued, our fee is typically gonna be one and a half percent. That's our fee. The total cost of issuance should be somewhere around two and a half percent to three percent, depending on, there's certain fees that can be paid upfront in aggregate, other fees that can be paid annually, and be those we can talk about late, but not, not paid to us, paid to other banks and such for paying agent fees, to make sure that, you know, your payments are made on time. You're already paying those, or had paid those with the issuance that you had in the past, so they would just be the same. But to answer your question, if multiple options were done, there would be some reduction of fees. Well, Chapman Color and our fee are probably gonna be two of the larger fees, some other fees are gonna pertain only to particular issuance, so those just. Any questions from the board on this, at this point? Nope. Okay, so the other handout that you have, that was the portrait, two pages staple. I think I caught you, that's the one, Kelly. So what I wanted to illustrate for you is that we don't know what EAV is gonna do, I don't know what it's gonna do. I think you saw another decline with the current coming levy year, is that correct? I just pulled the 2013 rate card from the county, it looked like, was there another decline, or is there something bad going?
No, the levies?
That was the EAV.
EAV, oh, I didn't.
Okay, never mind, scratch that, but I think that information is available now. So I'm using the most current EAV that I have, and what I wanted to do was show you that we can, what we always do as a safe assumption is assume flat EAV. In the past, going back twenty years, it was safe to assume, you know, two and a half, three percent, four percent EAV growth, because it happened with some regularity. And that's part of the reason why your bonds were structured the way they were to begin with, is because you saw a significant growth year after year. What I wanted to do is show you that if we assume flat EAV, which is the top half of this page, and look at the current structure, what the value, market value of a hundred thousand dollars would equate to as a portion of the tax bill. So if you owned a one hundred thousand dollar piece of property, how much you're paying annually, based on your current structure? So if you follow that down, the current year, somebody owning a hundred thousand dollar home would be paying five hundred fifty-nine dollars, it goes up each year, six hundred, six seventy, almost, seven hundred, seven fifteen, seven thirty-three, keeps climbing over nine hundred dollars in the last couple of years. That's, that's the effect, without knowing what EAV is gonna do on that taxpayer. If you go down to the second half of the page here, this is after the hypothetical restructuring that you saw on the other handout, and if we, and this one we can get updated, oh no, this, this is the most recent set of numbers, I'm sorry, I was scrambling this morning to get this all pulled together. So bringing those payments down to about two point six, or just under two point six million dollars, you can see that the payment on the far right goes up to about six fifty, and it stays there for the remainder of the debt service, until it falls down to five sixty in the last year. And this is extending the repayment by, basically, a year and a half, almost two full payments beyond what you had in place before. So if EAV goes up, or EAV goes down, it's going to impact this somewhat, but what's really going to make a difference to you as individual taxpayers, and change these numbers dramatically, is when the housing developments come back, when more taxpayers move into the area and pay a new portion, a new pro-rata portion of these tax bills. Until that happens, as EAV goes up, it's gonna go up because your property values are going up, and it's gonna go down because your property values are going down. So the next page is gonna look very similar to this, and it's basically gonna show you that if we assume one percent growth in EAV, we have to also assume that your property is gonna go up by one percent each year. It's not that the value goes up and your portion stays the same, until other businesses, you know, residences, new property comes in to create a new share that's paying into these same tax bills. So if you look at them, I think we're within a dollar, page to page, of how much you would pay over a ten or eleven-year, or I'm sorry, eleven or twelve-year period, because I, I don't know who's gonna move in here, I don't know what company's gonna come here and make this their home, and I don't know how many people are gonna come and went, but I do know that you had housing developments that froze when everything went down. They could have brought many houses, they would have brought more families, more taxpayers, that would have broken up this share to multiple properties beyond where it is right now. So I just wanted to show you an opportunity you have right now, while rates are about as low as they're going to get, to do something to stretch that debt out without being ridiculous about it, doing something that's reasonable, that will have an impact that's, over the next several years, positive to the tax base. In the long run, I, I've estimated that there's a difference of about two hundred and, what is that, two hundred and thirty dollars over a twelve-year period of added cost. So it's about twenty dollars a year, even though their payments are gonna go down and stay flat, over that period of time, it's about twenty dollars a year to do this, but that's all being paid in the final year, as opposed to increases that happen every year until the last payment is paid. And now I'm, I have to put Mr. Ward on the spot, 'cause you asked me for this information, I just wanna make sure that it's helpful, and that it makes sense.
I'm not sure I totally agree with you, I understand where you're going. I mean, new property is really what's gonna drive everybody's individual technical down.
Right.
If everybody's existing property raises the same amount of tax bill, it doesn't change.
This, this portion of it doesn't, I mean.
So, you're thinking on new property, and I think we're at one thirty-five right now, if I remember right.
I think.
But still, it, it ends up, if you're a taxpayer that's been there all along, day one, it's just gonna end up costing you more money. If somebody new is moving in, it's, it's a good deal, see if, unless, unless you're gonna be paying them, someone's been there for.
Right.
It does add in the year, year and a half, more onto your, cost to your home, or your car, whatever you're refinancing.
Right.
And on a standalone, did you have the numbers, pretty much the same if this was a standalone?
For the fees?
Issue, yeah.
Yeah, I, I got these just from historical stuff, from some of the other vendors, but as far as Chapman Color is concerned, their fee on this would be thirty thousand? And our fee again would be one and a half percent of whatever par amount is issued. In this case, what you're looking at here is about, I think, a four and a half to five million dollar refunding, and so our fee would come in somewhere around seventy to seventy-eight thousand dollars. And then with, with an actual underwriting like that, you would be paying the rating agencies, you would be paying, paying agent registrar, and an escrow agent, and all of those fees are dictated based on what you actually do. So a lot of that, you know, I could ballpark it for you right now, but I wouldn't have actual fees, so I wanted to ask those particular vendors for them.
Maybe if you can find this for the alternate bonds, that's still considered a small bond sale, so probably bundle it some other.
Um, actually, so. Well, what do you mean bundled with some other?
Oh, it wouldn't be a standalone, so.
Yeah, the five billion would.
Five would?
Yeah. Yeah, that would go through a traditional underwriting. The, the nine hundred thousand dollars, what banks are looking for, for private placement is something that has, has an average life of ten years or less. That alternate bond refunding is in the wheelhouse of what banks are looking at to just say, we'll give you this interest rate, you know? We compare that with what we, we think we can do through a traditional underwriting. Typically, it's better because they just wanna say, I want that, you know, give it to me, they get quick and simple, and, and they don't wanna go through a big process for it. So we'll, we'll always do that cost-benefit analysis to make sure that we're not just handing a bank, you know, a rate that's, that hasn't been validated in some way.
And the timeline on this one would have to be completed by the first of December, so would it have an effect next year?
Yeah, if we wanted to affect the next levy year, we would have to have this done, have paperwork filed, which means opposing documents filed with the county, whenever they're gonna set the levy, so basically, the end of the year, around that time.
Does it really affect the first couple of years anyway?
Um, it affects the second year.
Oh, yeah.
But we would have to.
Maybe you don't have that short, maybe you have a longer timeline than you do.
We would, we'd be able to structure the refunding around what money you've already, you're already set up to collect, so we'd have flexibility there. But in order to affect the next year, where that two point six million dollar mark that I've used as a hypothetical here, we'd have to get by the end of next year. But, you know, right now, rates are low, I, I don't know what the election is gonna do, I don't know what the Fed is gonna do, seems like they're gonna wait until the election plays its course, and, and who knows what's gonna happen, I have no idea, I can speculate. Does anybody else have any questions?
It was brought as a discussion item, there's a lot to think about, but I think it's something that needs to stay on our radar.
Hope you guys come up with any new questions, if you have any now, I don't.
I would think you'd wanna move ahead, at least with the alternate bond one, and you can begin some of that process, and then tag this one in a little bit later. Still, like, in one, one package?
Uh, we might be able to. Some of the banks, some of the banks will allow us to do a forward rate lock, so they'll give us a longer window than a traditional underwriting.
I don't see downside to the alternate bond.
Say that again?
The alternate bond restructuring, there's no downside to that one.
No.
No, it doesn't lengthen up the term of payments or anything?
It doesn't, it keeps the same term short, it, it reduces the payments.
But that requires, does that require a final hearing, a couple of things?
Only if we don't show savings in every year, which currently, it shows savings in every year, so there's no concern there. If that changes by the time we finalize this, which I don't think it will, but that could complicate things, but I just, if it's something that you guys jump on, I don't think it's gonna change.
And the only downside would be if the rate went down more, we would block higher.
Right, the, the only risk with that is gonna be interest rate risk, which is, it goes with any issuance, could go up, could go down, there's far more room for rates to go up and down, but you could still, you know, lock that in, and then see that they move down ten basis points, and you don't wanna kick somebody up far away. Things have been scarily stable with interest rates at a low mark for longer than I, I could have imagined. So great, great place to be if you're considering borrowing, and, you know, I only mention that you guys have had the, the new money opportunity on the table now for a year, you have two more years of authority there. If you ever decide to do that, you could potentially run into a situation where you issue next year and look back and say, could have done it last year, but, you know, whenever, I know there's projects that's been talked about, and if that's something that you wanna talk about with this, you, you can certainly do that as well, you have the authority to do so, but just know that any of these new money restructuring, refunding for savings, you can do any part of that that you want to do, pretty much at any time, so. If you guys have any questions, you know, filter them through the administrators, I'm happy to provide whatever information you guys want, and then.
Do you wanna bring the pack into September production? What is going, what are thoughts?
I could see moving on the alternate bond one right away. Would it be a benefit in waiting, doubling up to finish the fees that are associated?
Sounds like the alternate one's pretty much on its own, isn't it?
It, it doesn't have to be, it would be a standalone issue, I think, if it was done simultaneous with the restructuring, per se, you would get a lower fee from Chapman Color for sure, I would lower my fee, I'm sure, a little bit on the, on the private placement, 'cause that is a flat fee.
Which process is the longer one, the alternate bond one, or the, which one has more steps to go, is it the alternative or the?
They're both gonna have the same transcript documents, or similar transcript documents, which means that when you guys get the pile, the board officers have to sign, that's all gonna be similar. As far as the preliminary work that leads up to it, the underwriting, the restructuring.
Doesn't, doesn't one of them require an additional board meeting?
No, they, they would.
Or final meeting?
No, they wouldn't, neither of them would require publications, or hearings, or anything.
You just started out this presentation saying they would require an additional board meeting, no?
That, that meeting would be the meeting that would end up finalizing the bond sale for whatever that we do, which means that's when you would lock in the interest rate and that's when everything will be final. And from there, we move towards closing.
So we're in agreement, we could begin the preparation work for the alternative bond. And follow next month, yes or no, on following restructuring. It could all be combined then and still do it all like November, October.
Yeah, I think you do that.
It'll still be in.
Is there an advantage that we have to form right now if we're not doing the other?
No, I mean, the, the refunding for savings, I think, I don't like using the term. I would categorize it as an no-brainer. You're, you're achieving savings, you're achieving lower payments. Yeah, I think it's something that, you know, if one was going to move forward, that one would probably be the, the first one. You know, if the restructuring idea is something that you guys like and you want to move forward with it, we can, we can use the same meeting to do both. Whether that's the next board meeting, whether it's the month after that. I mean, we can do them in tandem. You know, I mean, if you wanted to, obviously, you're going to take time to think about and figure out if you want to pursue the restructuring at all. You can certainly do that. I mean, you should do that. So if, I don't know, do you have another planned business committee meeting at this point or no?
Not a planned one, but when will they have one in September?
In September. So I mean, in September, if you wanted, you know, to get together again and, and go over this again to see, you know, which way you wanted to move, then we can decide. I mean, the only downside is prolonging the refunding for savings to the point where it's detrimental to the savings. So, which could happen. I don't know that it will, but it could.
Look to bring it to a business meeting in September and then possibly back to the board September, for the September regular board meeting.
Both of them or? Both of them are just warm.
Well, the alternate for sure, it sounds like we start to.
I guess depending on the timing, what you could do is if you're sitting on the fence with either of these, you could do what we'll call a parameters resolution as opposed to a final bond resolution. What that would do is the board would adopt two, one or two resolutions. I'm not sure if we would need two because of the alternate bonds or not. But there would be two authorizing resolutions that set forth all the parameters, all the maximums, all the constraints that give, it'll give two people the authority, typically that's the board president, superintendent, the authority to sign off on a final bond sale. What that would do is get the board action step out of the way and get the authority in your back pocket to decide when and what to do at some future date. The alternative is we go through all the preliminary steps, knowing full well that you're moving in that direction to use a board meeting that is the final authorizing meeting to act on it. So those are the two ways to have the authority. Again, you don't need publications, you don't need public hearing, any of that. But you can go either route and it usually depends on timing. You know, we talked about it when we get a business committee meeting and you say, yeah, we want to do that, when can we do it? You can throw the parameters resolution on the next available board meeting just to get that step out of the way. If you don't like the idea of that, you can go the traditional route and do all the preliminary steps first.
Good study. You did. Bonds one, two, three, and four. I have a little more technical, but none of those bonds are callable at any point in your line?
Uh, no, the building bonds that you did.
No, none of them were.
No.
You did some that were.
I think they may have just been fully the fees within the last year or two. These ones that are all outstanding are all capital appreciation bonds.
Yeah.
That's why your debt service payments are nice clean zeros. I, I saw that right from looking at it. And capital appreciation bonds typically were not issued with a call provision. So the call provision is what's key to generating savings if it's available.
Right, I was just thinking there was a couple of the ones towards the 2008 that we thought kind of butted in. So they were called for towards Canada. That was 10 years ago.
Yeah.
If I can direct with that. Also, the fees on the larger bond sale. They're doing payable at the end of the sale.
They would be paid from bond proceeds.
They would be paid from bond proceeds.
Right, so the district wouldn't be cutting any checks to anybody. All of those fees would be finalized. We would build them into the structure and they'd be paid at closing. So.
So that roughly $120,000 or whatever it is, is really part of the $800,000 that comes to the end somehow. I mean, it's blended in, but it's really part of that $800,000.
Yeah, you could look at it that way.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I mean, any of these preliminary numbers runs that I use, I actually inflate the fees just to have placeholders that I know are going to come down when we actually go and talk to all of the professionals that are going to be involved. It's just one way to make sure that what I show you now preliminarily doesn't end up looking a lot worse, you know, a month or two down the road when you end up pursuing something. Thank you.
Is there a direction the board is leaning? Of course, how we want to do this. For the business services meeting, we want it to come to the next board meeting.
I can see the value in getting started with the alternative bond sale.
Business meeting at or hold board with all board members there?
I'm open to, I'm open to it. I just, I don't think that we need to progress any on that one. I mean, the other one, maybe we need some more discussions about where we want to be, but that one seems pretty cut and dry.
Do you have a feeling, Joe?
I'm in agreement that I may as well start over with the alternative bond restructuring.
Tom?
It's hard to start with alternative bond restructuring, but I wouldn't let it get past a point where it's going to cost you more than. Because you've got to combine the two, so that's why I think the board needs to stay. I think you can go ahead. With the alternative bond one is to make a decision in September on the next one so that two can be blended together to save some savings to the taxpayers. That's what you're looking at, savings to the taxpayer.
I guess where I was at with it is like if we put the alternative one aside, then we can focus on where we want to be. The other one, I agree, we'd, we'd have to make a decision, you know, in September. But it just seems then that that could be the focus of the business service meeting rather than rehashing both issues together. I mean, like I said, this one seems like it's pretty cut and dry to me.
So I guess, I guess my opinion would be that they can proceed with that one without getting to the point of finalizing it so that we can still blend it together 30 days. Or not, that it's not, that it's ready to go, finish up, post stuff to the board and move ahead with that one. How much you can do preliminary on that.
On which one?
On the alternative bond.
Yeah, I can start talking to some of the contacts I have to see what interest rates might look like. And I had mentioned a forward rate lock. And typically, it's not the same as a mortgage. You don't get it locked in for a certain period of time when you go through an underwriting. But what banks are doing now is saying, I'll give you a rate today. And that's good as long as we close. It is similar to buying a house. That rate is good as long as we close within, say, a three-month period or something. If we find a rate that we're happy with, we can lock that in temporarily and then move towards whether or not you want to add anything to that issuance and go from there. That's something that we can.
I think we're just bringing it back, right?
I'd make a motion to move ahead with the preliminary procedures for restructuring the alternative.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any further discussion? We'll call.
Mr. Ellenson?
Yes.
Mr. Herberly?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Question carries. Then all we need for that, we're just going to bring back the restructuring next month.
Yeah.
We got to hear from everybody working from a business service standpoint, what direction would you like Andy to focus if we're going to look at this restructuring of these other bonds? Give us some, give us some ideas of what you're thinking you'd like to see so that we can get the work done and be in position where we can make a decision.
I would wonder what would look like if we didn't add yours on, if we just leveled it out. Just.
Flat to the last year that's going to be paid off.
Right.
Good.
Anyone else?
Yeah, you're on.
Nobody wants to see the 20-year structure?
No.
Would you want to maintain the C V, the C V becomes the same tail schedule as it is? Or would you like to see something different with that?
I can see it stay the same, but some of that's supposed to be best enough that long, isn't it?
I don't, I was going to say, I don't know what the flexibility is with that.
Right, it is, um, except for the 1.5. No, I think he did last June, he did structure that out last June. So you're right, you're right, probably some of it's not available.
All right. Good thought though.
I can tell you just from the hip that the payment will be higher than what was shown. But I'm sure the overall cost will be less, but I can pull that together for comparison. Do we know when that meeting is, September?
27.
Is that the business meeting or the board?
The board meeting is 27. So it would be the Thursday before the board meeting or?
Typically what we do.
So I would put it at the 22nd.
So it's fresh, back to the board.
Everyone have what they need then? If there's no further business to come before the board, we wish you a happy birthday. 35.
35?
And what's your most good year?
So moved.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
All opposed? Have a good one.